We up?
Yes.
All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 28, 2021. It's currently 10:01. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court at this time. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flags.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the gift of life as we take care of the business of the citizens, if we will, do it in patient understanding and have knowledge and reference to it and be the, out term, be righteous in thy name. In Christ's name we ask all these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Straight, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, you have the minutes in front of you from the December 14 regular session. I entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
You got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have a time for public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff, and they may be placed on future agenda or addressed by some other course of action. Did you give me a list of people?
They're on the side.
On my side, thank you. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. My name is Tim Oliver, born and raised, 2104 County Road 3308. I now reside in Cattle Mills. I'm here to speak to you regarding the solid waste ordinance that you're going to hear. My wife and I are the owner and operator of Blackjack Disposal. In general, I am supportive of the need to reduce the ability to open new landfills. However, the way the ordinance or the resolution reads currently, it's very broad. It speaks to recycling facilities, and I'm about three days away from closing on a million-dollar property in the southern part of Hunt County where I'd like to put a recycling drop-off facility, just a couple of dumpsters where the underserved areas in the southern part of Hunt County could bring recyclables that, as you all know, out in the county, you don't have a trash service that will pick up recyclables as well. And the way the ordinance reads right now, it is all-encompassing, not just landfills, which I think was the intent, but it reads material recovery facilities, transfer stations of any size, whether large volume or small volume generators, recycling drop-off facilities, and it's catching all of these opportunities for those underserved areas in the southern part of the county that I'd like to address with the property that I'm purchasing. And so I would ask that you take a look at the ordinance, the way it reads, and really dial in on what your goal is. I'm supportive of preventing future landfills, but all of those other beneficial opportunities for employment and tax revenue would be cut at the same time.
Thank you. John Kelso.
Judge, I'll speak on item 8A of the public hearing.
Okay. 8A? Anyone else wish to speak? Come forward and state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Lori Howell. I was born and raised here in Hunt County. I'm a real estate agent and broker here in Hunt County, and I plan to do so for a very long time. But we have a huge issue with our county roads, as I'm sure all of you are aware. I'm coming here today regarding my personal road that I live on, County Road 2508. I'm in precinct two, and we just have a very, very unsafe, almost un-driveable road for about two miles. Well, at least that's to my house, but when you get beyond my house, it gets worse. It's in desperate need of being paved, and so I was told we were on the list to be paved when the fiscal year started over in October, but I didn't know if that was just rumor or what the plan was.
Good. Thank you. Randy, did you have a comment on that?
Well, we do have it in the mark, in the makes to start all sand in that road. We've been talking seriously about it, getting to it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir. Come forward and state your name, please.
My name is Randy Huffman. I also live on 2508. I've been a police officer for 16 years. I moved into Hunt County into Cattle Mills about three years ago. The house that I live in, it's a new build, and I wanted to talk about that road as well regarding the potholes and such, numerous flat tires with people running off the road, things like that, but with the ruts in the dirt road, causing an unsafe traction issue on the dirt road. As a police officer, I've conducted many traffic collisions. People drive about 30-plus miles on that road, so I'll use the 30 mile per hour average here. Stopping distance is 110 feet. That's including the human factor, obviously, for the two-second rule. The 110-feet stopping distance is on a paved road, not on a dirt road, so it does cause a safety issue with kids playing out in the driveway, houses being close to the road as well. So I wanted to just add that with that 2508 road.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come forward and state your name, please.
Judge Stovall, Commissioners, I'm John Belts. I live at 25, on 2508 as well, and I just wanted to add to the two previous that we have tried the crushed asphalt that lasted maybe eight months. You cannot even tell that we've had the crushed asphalt. The part of the road at the beginning of 2508 off the service road is asphalt, but it is full of potholes. Then, when you start the rest of the mile and a half, I would say, of the road, it is dirt, sand, rock, and there is what I would call ripples. You can fishtail on those ripples doing six miles an hour. I can only imagine if an emergency vehicle was to come down our road, I don't know what would happen. You cannot get any traction on those ripples. And yes, we were told that we were maybe third in line. I have tried to contact Mr. Straight. I've tried to contact Commissioner, and I'm not getting any answers, and so I'm not sure when we're actually on the calendar to get that redone, but I just hope it's soon before, you know, God forbid, some kind of accident does happen.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else like to speak? Daniel, are we getting anybody online?
No.
Okay. This time, we'll go into old business, review and approve interlocal agreements between local governments and election administration or local government elections. Are we ready for that, Daniel? Or we don't need the executive session?
No, not, we're going to do that one. That's left over from last night.
Right.
That's not going to be.
It's still not ready?
No.
Okay, all right. So we need to keep it on old business or put it on a regular agenda item when you're ready?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move that to old business. Commissioners, you got the consent calendar in front of you. I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action items counts, approval accounts payable.
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers, including the one you got when we got here today.
Make a motion for approval of line item transfers.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments.
Second.
Second?
Yes, I'll second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel.
Make a motion to approve the payroll and personnel.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Think at this time, Daniel, you think we need to go into executive session and talk about number six before we take up the rest of these items?
Yes.
Commissioners, I entertain a motion to go into executive session under item one.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I apologize to the public being here, but to conduct this next forum, we need some advice from counsel before we get to it, so we're going to take a short executive session and come right back out. See, all excuse yourselves to the lobby. We appreciate it so we can get this done and get you all heard as quick as we can. Do what? That one or mine? Okay, yeah, sure. You have to do it here.
I tell you what, the albor gets a yell in that thing, that's what causes it to monitor it.
Yeah.
We need to take a decision here.
Come on. Huh?
You're back up.
We are?
Yeah.
All right. It's 10:26 and we're back in regular session. Give everybody a chance to get back in from executive session. We need a public hearing? Yes, okay. Yeah, I got you on that one. Okay. Now that we're back in session, we're going to skip down to item number seven. The adoption of ordinance prohibiting saddle waste disposal in Hunt County. At this time, I'm going to open it up to a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak about this issue can come forward and state your name and give us your opinion. Daniel, we got anybody online?
Checked right now. No, we don't.
Okay. If nobody comes forward, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, I entertain a motion on action item number seven.
So moved.
To approve it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
To approve it as written.
And Phillip, you're second?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner, we got any discussion? We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number eight, a public hearing considering and take action on Texas Code, Chapter 312 Tax Abatement Agreement between Hunt County and HB Hood, Inc. Daniel, do you need to brief us?
This is the $300 million to $400 million dairy plant that we've been talking about for several months that is on the north side of 66, right at 1570. HB Hood's attorney is here and so is a representative from the Board of Development. If you have any questions. There's two things that are coming up. One's a 312 tax abatement agreement, which is, has the same terms as we've given to the past four, I believe, companies seeking a tax abatement. The 312, there's also a 312 abatement agreement, or I'm sorry, a 381 Economic Development Agreement for refund of some taxes. We don't often do those for the smaller projects of less than $50 million. This one is obviously a much bigger project. Last time we did one of those was 2019. But both of these, the 312 and the 381, are, have been published the appropriate way. We're ready for a public hearing on 312. And they fall within our guidelines that we adopt for economic development each year. So I can answer any general questions that you have and then the attorney and the GBOD representative can answer any detailed questions if you have any.
Okay. Why don't we open it up to public hearing now? At this time, I'll open it up to public hearing. Anybody that has any comments in regards to a tax abatement through Chapter 312 between Hunt County and HB Hood, Inc., come forward and speak. Mr. Kelso, I think you already, I'll leave you. That's what you want to talk about.
John Kelso, 6005 Horn Drive, Greenville, Texas, 75402. I just want to encourage you to go ahead and vote on this today. Don't delay this. I'm in favor of it. I hope you're in favor of it. I hope you pass this. It's something, you're the last one. I think the city and the school have already done approvals for their abatements in Chapter 313 and whatever they had to do. So you're the last ones. We don't, we don't want to send a signal to anybody with delay that, we don't want to encourage this type of development in the county. We need this. It'll be good for the county and we need to get it rolling as quick as we can. So I'd encourage you to not delay on this. Go ahead and approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else wish to speak? Not being any, nobody on line either?
No.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Chapter 312 Tax Abatement Agreement between Hunt County and HB Hood, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number nine, consider and take action on Texas Tax Code 381 Economic Development Agreement between Hunt County and HB Hood, Inc. Do we have to do a public hearing on this one?
No.
Okay. You have any additional comments from?
I don't have any comments online.
Okay. Commissioners, you got any questions? And I'll entertain a motion for approval of action item number nine.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to go back. That was eight and nine. We're going to go back up to number two, the award of the final bid, number two, 18-22 Vehicle tires in service for 12-month contract effective January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022. The purchasing department recommends award to Southern Tire Mart LLC, the lowest to miss vendor, which best conforms to bid specification as per bid tabulation. Commissioners, got any comments? Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number three, the purchase of additional Hart Interseptic Verity voting equipment due to redistricting changes. Commissioners, we talked about it some last week, I think in executive session to bring the court up to date on, because of redistricting and because of the growth of the county, we have ended up with more voting precincts than we've ever had before. And we purchased new equipment six months ago. And we based that on the voting precincts that we had at the time. Now that we got more precincts, we need more equipment. So we did move the money earlier out of capital improvement contingency into a line item for the purchase of voting equipment, which is in that budget. Jeannie, you got any comments? I hit all the buttons or?
Hit all the buttons.
Okay. All right. I'll make the motion when you approve action item number three.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number four, the county clerk fee schedule for 2022 effective January 1st, 2022. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number five, the monthly treasurer's report for October 2021. Brittany?
Good morning. You have the report for October in your packets, the month in balance for October 31st, 2021, That is cash on hand and invested funds. The one change that you will notice on this report is in our outstanding debt. It is on the fourth page. We did add, the auditors did create the line item for the reserve state comptroller number three payment and added an additional $190,356.35 to our outstanding debt total. That will remain as a balance until August of 2022 when they start paying it. It will not start paying until the second reserve state comptroller gets paid off.
Okay.
And so that is the only change for this month of October, that we did add that additional $190,000 to the debt.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? Just for clarity for the public, the new debt that we have is not, it's not our debt that we went out and incurred. What's happened is a large industry here collected sales tax on items that they shouldn't have collected, so they had to refund it to the vendor. And we're getting back charged because they had collected and paid the state and the state paid us our sales tax. The state's giving us 30 years to repay it, Bruce, is that right?
It's a very, no interest rate and it's very, very.
It's long, it's long-term with no interest, but we have to repay something that we were given. We have to give it back to the state because we shouldn't have gotten it to start with. So just for clarity to the public. Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval, action item number five.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item?
Judge, I want to thank y'all, or thank you for advising them what's going on. We had nothing to do with that, but I do appreciate you taking the time to go on and inform these people.
All right. Action item number six, take up consideration and possible action on order to confirm election precincts following the redistricting in the Commissioners' Court precincts pursuant to Chapter 42 Texas Election Code and any resulting changes that may have an impact on the justice of the peace constable precincts. Commissioners, we, as you know, Eric McGee helped us with our Commissioners' Court and JP and Constable Precincts boundaries about a month ago. They came back in two weeks ago and, or we had a Zoom meeting with them in which myself and Jeannie Ash and somebody in the party chairs were in my office on a Zoom call with McGee where we had to go in and because of the growth, we actually had, I think, one in Cattle Mills area that had 7,000 voters in a box and we can't have it 5,000. And we'd already gotten complaints the last few years that we had too many people trying to vote in that particular location. So we had to go in there and break it up. So we ended up with two and we've got the finalized maps Wednesday before Christmas last week. And I think you should all have it either by email or hopefully delivered to you in paper. And so we, it's up to us now to approve those voting precincts. The party chairs are in agreement with it and thinking we've got fair and equal voting places. So Jeannie, you got anything you want to add?
Good morning. Just for the public's clarification, I would like to go over the revisions that were made to the election precincts. Election precinct 214, 16, and 17 were modified by the redistricting of the new congressional boundary. That's in the southernmost part, southwest part of the county.
South of 270, basically.
Election precinct 214 was split due to the redistricting of the new congressional boundary and those were renamed 214A and 214B. It's also southwest kind of central portion of the county. Election precinct 215 was split due to the number of registered voters and renamed 215A and 215B. The redistricting of Commissioner Court precincts one and four were modified, election precincts 102, were modified, election precincts 102 and 432, where we took in Wolf City into precinct 432 and took it out of 102. The redistricting of Commissioner Court precincts two and three modified former election precinct 212 and election precinct 324. And then the redistricting of Commissioner Court precincts required modification to election precincts 211 and 212, renaming the portion above Interstate 30 as election precinct 111 as opposed to 211, and also renamed the former portion of election precinct 211 to the new election precinct 212.
Thank you, Jeannie. Out to the public, as you can tell by the reading of those changes, a lot of people, yet we're required supposedly by Friday, the 31st of this month, they have new voter registration cards out. Since COVID extended all of the census and extended the redistricting, it's been extended till later. I think it's going to get done when they get it finished because they're working as hard as they can to get all that approved so they can get it out to all the public on the voter registration. If you don't get your voter registration card like you normally do around the first of the year, be patient. It's coming as fast as you can get it done. Like we said, we just, we just got this finalized today, basically, to approve the redistricting of the voting precincts. And we still have school districts in cities that have not even got through with their redistricting yet. So there's a lot of changes happening. It's trying to happen real fast to get prepared for the March primary. So we're doing it as fast and rapidly as we can and thank Jeannie and her staff for all the work they're doing. Commissioners, I entertain a motion for approval, action item number six.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Let's see here. Let's skip all of those for a minute. Let's go to, let's go to 34, public hearing and possibly take action on a rescindus addition, replat of lots one and two of Shady Lane Acres and precinct three. Brian, you got any comments on this one before we open it up to public hearing?
This is a replat of a subdivision down precinct three. They are taking two lots and making three lots. It's on the corner of a private, privately maintained road and a county maintained road. Couple of changes on the plat will be noted on the final plat for signatures if it's approved, stating that that road is privately maintained, no county funds will be used for maintenance. Other than that, I have received a couple of calls about this, but it meets all of our requirements for the county, all of our subdivision requirements.
This is a replat of a subdivision that was recorded in the 60s, I believe it was.
Eighties. Eighty-four is when the subdivision was.
Was created? Okay. All right. All right. This time I'll open this action item up to a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak about the replat of the rescindus addition, please come forward. Daniel, anybody online had any comments?
No.
Okay. Come forward and state your name, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Lisa Kavanaugh and I live at 6271 Byram. That is the street that's adjacent to where this is to happen supposedly. Thank you for hearing me today and my side and why I don't think it's a good idea. The reason why we moved to Quinlan away from the city was because of the nice area that each acreage has. That is something that I have always wanted. We are semi-retired and I am very concerned with these houses being put in a small area, what that's going to be, what that's going to look like and what it's going to do to our roads because of increased, you know, traffic, increased noise. Yes, I'm getting old. It gets on my nerves.
Amen.
But, but I just want them to understand that we've worked all our lives and there are more than 70% of our street are semi-retired. And I just, I really would like to prefer to see it with expanse of each person having plenty of acreage and not having a lot of stuff piled on with those three lots made in, I mean, two lots made into three. It's just, it's not eye appealing.
Understood. Thank you, ma'am. Sir, do you want to speak? Okay.
My name's Richard Ross. I live on 6323 Shady Acres Lane, which is the road parallel to Byram Road. It's also part of this little subdivision area. Basically, one of the big charm of the neighborhood is the fact that everybody is kind of spread out and there's only so many lots there. One family per lot kind of puts a limit as to how many people can move into the area. It kind of limits the size of the neighborhood. Over 20 years ago, my wife picked that place, was to get out of Mesquite because we wanted somewhere away from the city, wanted somewhere where you didn't have people right next door. You don't want to hear what they're watching on TV from your own living room. I mean, it's nice to be spread out. I just feel like if you start allowing, because up till this point, no one's been allowed to break the lots down into smaller lots. I feel like it starts a dangerous precedent to where as people move out, other people might, you know, have property bought up by a development label and want to break it down smaller. And like I said, it's part of the whole charm of the neighborhood is the fact that it cannot get crowded, which is part of the whole point of living in a rural area. And like I said, I just think that this particular thing would break tradition from all the years that the property's been set. Like you said, it was set in the 80s. It's been like that. Everybody's been fine with it until now and I don't see any reason to change it. And I know my wife agrees with it. She was just unable to be here this morning. My wife's parents live on the plot behind us off Byram Road. He's here this morning as well. Like I said, they agree, but just don't feel like it's in the best interest of everyone who lives there because we plan on staying there. You know, it's a place to retire. Don't want to have to be moving in the middle of retirement age because the neighborhood's changed suddenly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Laurie Cummings. I live on Byram Road. This lot at the end of the street you're trying to divide on us is a swamp. If I drive through it, you're going to get stuck. If people bought it, don't realize that. But they sticking three houses in there is going to cause our roads to go bad. They're already bad enough as it is. They come in and throw a big old shovel, a hot patch in there and call it good. They don't even pound it down. With all these extra houses going in down there, it's going to be very uneye appealing. And we are not going to stand up and have it done. We are not. The whole neighborhood is two acres. We do not want it subdivided. And if you give us enough time, well, I'll have a partition made up by all the neighbors in the whole area to shut this down because we don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Judge, Commissioner. My name is Bob Byram. My father did this addition in 84. We bought the property in the late 60s. All of this property, or most of it, is in trees. We left this, these four lots here, is no trees on it. We saved it to the last. We've been cutting hay on it. This property does have a serious drainage problem. It's, on this plat here, this property here, there's 40 acres of open pasture. And when it rains, it comes down and it crosses across here. And these, this lot here especially suffers and, but this water comes from the trees too. It all, it all turns this way. And on Byram Road, right here on this first lot, the water with two inches of rain crosses the road. And 20 yards of water crosses the road. This, this land that we've been cutting hay on, the land, the ground is not very stable. It's like what I call sugar sand. Gets very saturated. It could be problematic putting septic tanks out there that might want to float in a heavy rain. But weren't these people, my father put, built the addition in 84 and I sold most of all the lots myself in a contract for deed. All of these people are retirees. They've lived there a long time. We do not want to subdivide any of these lots. We want four houses on four lots. And these people are longtime taxpayers. And we need our way on this. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else wish to speak? Any comments online, Daniel?
No.
Not? Anybody else? Okay.
Hi. My name is Kim Carnes and I live at 6260 Byram Road. And I was wondering as far as the TCEQ on the OSSF, they require 1.5 acres. Does the county override that?
Yes, we have it to one acre.
That's what I was wondering because the TCEQ had 1.5 and if it was subdivided down, it'd be short.
No. No, they can't do one acre.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? None, I'll close the public hearing.
May I ask you a question, please?
Can I make a statement first?
Okay, cool.
As much as we feel your compassion and y'all's desires, unfortunately, we don't have the authority under the Texas law to take that into consideration. If they meet our subdivision rules, we basically have no choice but to approve it. That being said, I'm very concerned about the drainage of it, and I'm gonna recommend that we table this and get with the developer and ask him to come give us some drainage issues and septic issues to make sure that it is acceptable for drainage and we're not creating a problem. And, Philip, you wanna ask your question?
Yes, sir, I appreciate that. I agree with you totally in reference to this. I would like to ask you this, you made the statement that your father was selling this and all that. The judge is correct, if they meet the specifications of a plat, and we really have no alternative other than accept the plat. But on the other hand, what he's doing is, I believe, is going far beyond, and, because we have the health, public health, you know, it concerns me. What I would like to ask you, evidently, you sold these people that land, correct?
Yes.
Okay, by any chance, was there...
No, 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 I didn't sell the people who bought these four lots.
Sir, could you step to the mic?
Yeah, give him the mic, please.
That way, there are people watching online, that way they can hear as well.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
I sold the land to a gentleman about three or four years ago.
Okay.
And then he was, told me he was gonna have, build houses for his family, gonna build four houses. After owning the, he, I sold the contract for deed, after owning it three or four years, he, uh, he decided to sell it. And so, he is, he sold it.
My question is this right here, was there any stipulation, reference to the deeds or anything like that, that any of this property act there could not be subdivided?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's supposed to be one house in the restrictions, one house per lot.
Okay.
But we can't, we can't enforce deed restrictions, which y'all can, I mean, that's a civic, that becomes a civic problem.
That's what I was gonna bring up, I didn't know whether there was a deed restriction in reference to this, and that would be for y'all to take action in reference to that. But that's why I'm saying, you say, "Well, we don't want it." Well, was there anything in there that prohibited? That's what I was asking.
No, I don't, I don't believe so. I, you know, I, I just believe that we're gonna have somebody that wants to build three houses instead of two, and then he's gonna sell them and, you know, and be on his way, and then we have to live with that. And, and, I tell you that it's got a serious flood problem.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna address that, and, you know, we're sympathetic to y'all's reasons and all, but unfortunately, our hands are somewhat tied, but we are concerned, I am concerned about the drainage. Normally, on this small of a track, we don't necessarily ask for engineering, but we can. So, with this knowledge, we will ask the developer to furnish us with a site plan with the drainage lined out on it, and make sure that they get soil samples done, and make sure that our health department will issue a septic permit on it.
The, the man who is on Lot seventeen, he, he has to dig ponds, he's got ponds dug all around his house to retain water when it comes off that pasture I was speaking of. And, I mean, it's really...
Okay, well, we appreciate your comment. Commissioners, I'm, uh... Hang on, Daniel?
This is the last meeting before the thirty-day shot clock runs on this, and putting it on old business is not gonna be sufficient.
So we gotta turn it down?
We gotta turn it down, but since this is new knowledge and we're asking for an additional item, I would suggest that you deny it until there's a drainage study. There's gonna have to be a secondary application, but in that same vote, you can vote to waive the secondary application so that it's not, you know, causing the person who's trying to do this to be double paying.
And waive the fee for reapplication?
That's right.
Okay. Brian, you got any comments?
No, that's, that's about it. I think it's all covered, I was just gonna bring up, hey, we, we can't table it because we're at the, we're at the point.
Good to know, good to know, thank you. Alright, Commissioners, I make a motion that we deny the plat, the replat of rescindus addition, replata lots one, two, Shady, Shady Lane Acres, and require that they resubmit with engineering studies done for drainage, as well as septic permitting studies to make sure that these lots will be able to have onsite septic systems, and I recommend that we waive any application and fees for resubmission.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank y'all for coming out and making us aware of the drainage and all. Action item thirty-five, a public hearing, possibly take action on the replata lots twelve and thirteen of Benton Estates and Precinct Four. And that's the one I should've done earlier. I thought all the people were on, offered the other thing. Alright, go ahead, Brian.
This replat over in Benton Estates, the, the property owner owns two lots, his son is going to build on one of the lots, but he doesn't want the entire lot, so he's gonna cut it in half. Son's going to get a portion of, of the lot, and he's going to keep his lot and the remaining portion of that lot to be divided, so...
He currently got a house built on?
Already has a house on it.
That was on twelve or something? Is that the right lot?
Yes, yes, Lot, Lot twelve has a house on it where, where Mr. Richards lives, and Lot thirteen is the one that's actually being kinda divided in half for a new residence, so...
Meets everything else?
Meets everything else. He's been in touch with everybody in the neighborhood, that ninety-five percent of everybody in the neighborhood, and, and has gotten signatures, they've all received letters as well, and I haven't had any callbacks on this one whatsoever.
Okay, at this time, I'll open this up for a public hearing on the replata lots twelve and thirteen of Benton Estates. Anybody here wish to speak for or against this? Being no one, Daniel, I'm guessing anybody's... Okay. No comments, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval of Action item number thirty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item thirty-six, final plat of New Sun Estates in Precinct Two.
Got a couple of comments that will be addressed on final for signature. One, they did not get the building line on the lots. Two, there was a, some wording that was questionable on one of the notes, saying that we wouldn't issue a building permit for this little remainder track that's across the road. Well, we don't have building permits, so we wanted that specified to development permit, keep someone from trying to put a house or a septic or anything else on it, it's two tenths of an acre, and there again, it's just, the road cut it off from, from the remaining tracks, so...
Entertain a motion for approval with stated exceptions.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The final plat of Emma Acres in Precinct Four.
Were we gonna talk about this one here or take it executive?
Probably need to speak back to executive on this one.
Okay, alright, we'll skip it and talk about it in executive session. My bad, sorry. Action item thirty-eight, the final plat of Escobar Estates in Precinct Four.
This one's actually right across the road from Benton Estates. He's, he's not sure if he's going to subdivide the remainder track any further, kinda depends on how this goes. The remainder track has ample frontage, it has plenty of frontage, and he left also a strip for a road in the future if he wanted to. Wanna get a note on that plat stating that the remaining track cannot be divided any further without the construction of a road to county specs, because it doesn't have the frontage to be divided any further. So he's at pretty much the bare minimum of what it requires, so wanna make sure that they don't try to get in there and subdivide it further, and, or sell it to someone who thinks they're gonna split it up, so... Right now, it's used for hay.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you, Judge.
Good to see y'all. Okay, Commissioners, I'm, you know, Daniel, you may need to help us a little bit on this. We've had some plats in the last few years where they've done something very similar and left just enough frontage, in this same scenario where they left some frontage that's not, does not meet our two seventy-five foot, but then they got another piece that you can add to it and get to it, and then they came back, and then they started trying to divide it off of it again, and I, we just wanna make sure that they understand that can't happen. And I, I suggested we make them include, that is another lot, is a Lot Five, and then make them do a replat, and, so that they don't come in with whatever the remainder thirty-five acres, they don't start selling off and trying to sell off three ten-acre tracks with flag lots.
We should discuss that in executive session.
Okay. Alright, well, we'll table this and talk about it in executive session. Action item number thirty-nine, the upgrade of Microsoft licenses and... Did I miss one, Brian? No, that's, that's all I mean. Upgrade of Microsoft licenses and contract assistance for installation. Brandon, you're informing the court about what's going on?
Yes, sir, forgive me, I lost my voice this week. But Microsoft has kinda put us in a bind here. We currently use Microsoft Office two thousand thirteen for about eighty percent, seventy-five to eighty percent of the computers in the county. We've been paying for extended support for Microsoft two thousand thirteen since two thousand eighteen. The reason we have to pay for this support, or have had to in the past, is because FBI and DPSC just regulations require that we have the up-to-date patches and security updates for Microsoft Office. As of October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, Microsoft released their support end date, which is April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. I realize that's over a year in advance in the future, but Microsoft will not let us change our license count except during our renewal period, which is January first to February first. So if we were to wait till next budget year and do this, we would have to actually wait till February first before we could actually start this project, which would only leave us less than three months to complete the project, which will take about six months. The project's gonna include moving all of our active directory data from an onsite server to the Microsoft cloud. We will still have an onsite active directory server in the event that internet goes down or we lose power, whatever, people can still log on to their computers. It'll be primarily in the cloud and then synced back to our onsite active directory on our domain controller. So, in order to do this, this is, whenever someone logs into any computer in Hunt County, they're not authenticating on the computer. When they put in their password, that password does not authenticate on that computer, it authenticates on our domain controller, which our, our domain controller controls huntcounty.net domain. And so, in order to authenticate with the new updated licenses, we will need to have it on the cloud, that way people can use it from their laptops, from their computers, and, um, and basically, the G three license that we're asking for, Microsoft is forcing everybody into it, most companies, most school districts, most municipalities, they've all already moved to Office three sixty-five completely. Currently, we only utilize OneDrive and Teams, and we're still using Microsoft Office two thousand thirteen, which is like an installed package that we pay for. The new G three licenses is a subscription-based, which is a subscription we have to pay for every year.
So we don't have to pay for Word and all that anymore? It'll be in this license?
Yes, it'll be a subscription license that we pay for every year. We were trying to put this off as long as possible because of how much it costs, but Microsoft is forcing everybody's hand on it. They're no longer gonna be supporting the old versions, which the new versions look the same, they're just a cloud-based. And it actually gives us a lot more, a lot more functionality, 'cause currently, we don't have the ability to do secured emails or encrypted emails. With the G three license, everyone will have the ability to send encrypted emails. This actually syncs all of our Microsoft Office programs now, so if one person in your office has a document open, and the other person opens that document from the same location, from the shared location, they can actually both work in the same document now, won't open a read-only copy like everyone's been used to for forty years, thirty years, however long Microsoft's been doing this. So it actually gives everyone in the office the ability to, to work together easier, but it's not something that we can avoid. If we don't do it now, then obviously, we, we have three months to do it next budget year, which, we, we can do it, it's just gonna be a sloppier process than, than we'd like to do it.
Okay, Commissioners, get any questions?
How long is this good for, Brandon? Is this a yearly renewal?
It's gonna be a yearly license, it's gonna be seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars every year.
Unless they go up?
Unless they go up, but it's, it's something that, as of two thousand twenty-three, we have to do every year if we wanna use Microsoft, so it's, it's not, no longer an option, so it's what Microsoft is forcing everybody into.
Is, I understand that we'll have to pay for it every year, but is there something else that they can jump to that we had to have to go up in quality to where it's gonna even cost us more? Is this just a jump up to another deal?
The G three license is the, the top tier, yeah.
Kenny, did you have a math question for?
Well, I was just curious, on the front page, you know, it says, you know, you need seventy-eight thousand dollars for this upgrade, you got thirty-one thousand, so you need forty-seven seven thirty-one, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, down here at the bottom, it says total funds requested forty-nine thousand, but you also have an additional funds contracted for five thousand.
Correct.
Bring it up there at about fifty-three thousand.
Because in my thirty-one ten line item, I have an additional thirty-two sixteen already, so I don't need the full five thousand, because what I'm gonna be paying this vendor out of is probably gonna be thirty-one ten anyway, 'cause I can't pay vendors out of my twenty-two thirty-five line item, which is software only.
I just wanna make sure you get the note.
Yeah, no, so, so what, the seventeen eighty-three, so forty-seven seven thirty-one plus seventeen eighty-three will equal the forty-nine five fourteen. That seventeen eighty-three is an actual additional software we will need to, to make this work, to make the sync work between our onsite active directory and the online, the cloud active directory. So the additional thirty-two sixteen, I will be using out of my thirty-one ten line item. So...
Alright, any other questions? Are we gonna get rid of servers, any servers doing all this in the cloud?
No, no, we, we still have to have our active directory on our domain controller here, in the event we lose internet, people can still use their computers.
We don't have as much storage anymore on here, do we?
Well, this, this doesn't have any storage on it, all it's doing is storing, the active directory domain controller just stores passwords and usernames.
Okay, so we're not using the cloud as a storage device?
No, we are already utilizing the cloud for storage, that's what OneDrive and Teams is.
That's what I understood, but I'm confused.
We, we already have that, so the active directory server is totally different than our storage servers that we eliminated last year by moving to OneDrive. So now, yes, we will continue to use domain controllers, but we just got a brand-new domain controller, so we're good on that one for a few years.
Okay. Bruce, we didn't move any money for this yet, have we? So we, if we approve this today, then come back next time and do the transfers of money to...
Yeah, they'll tell us exactly where it needs to go, and we'll take it out of...
But we can approve it today for him to purchase it, and then we'll have to get the money at the next meeting.
We'll take it out of contingency, and I assume you don't need to start until after we move the money, correct?
Correct, I, I'm going to process this, if approved, I'm gonna process this sometime in January, as long as it's done by February first.
Are you okay, Stacy?
Yes, sir, we just need to take it all out of one line item, you can pay stuff on your twenty-two thirty-five, your software repair maintenance, or your computer box ready to be considered for twenty. But we do need to show where money can be pulled out of one line item.
We, we can talk about that, get that figured out.
Basically, all's approval is to take it out of contingency, that's forty-nine five fourteen seventy.
Right.
Right, and I'll, and I'll get with Stacy on how to pay for it out of my budget, once it's transferred.
Okay.
We'll, we'll have that as a budget amendment for next court.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Uh, if not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of action, uh, 39 with the stipulation we'll, we'll fund it at the next meeting.
Shall move. Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, let's see. Becky, let's, I'm gonna back up, make sure, uh... So we'll back up, number 10 is the first one that we've got to back up to, and it's gonna be, we're gonna do 10, 11, 12, 13, all at the same time, a request for construction and placement of fiber, which may consist of both underground and aerial attachment to existing poles on County Road 1009, 1010, 1011, and 013.
Judge, make a motion, we approve these items 10 through 13 with the usual stipulations.
Second. Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, action item number 14 through...
23.
23.
Yes, sir.
Uh, request to construct and place, and placement of fiber, which may consist of both underground and aerial attachment to existing poles on County Road 3101, 3103, 3104, 3105, 3110, 3113, 3115, 3119, 3121, 3703.
I make a motion, we allow this to be done with the normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28.
29 and 30.
Request to construct and placement of fiber, which may consist of both underground and aerial attachment to existing poles on County Road 4106, 4108, 4112, 4113, and 4817. Entertain motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve item, action item number 24 through 28, normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, action item 29, a request to construct and placement of fiber, which may consist of both underground and aerial attachment to existing poles on Benton Lane.
Make a motion to approve, uh, normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 30, a request to construct and placement of fiber, which may consist of both underground and aerial attachment to existing poles on Wolf Trail.
Make a motion to approve under normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 31, a request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 3216 in precinct 3.
I make a motion, we allow the construction with the normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 32, the upgrade of approximately 1,700 feet of County Road 1027 from rock to oil sand in precinct 1, monies and escrow.
Your Honor, make a motion, we approve this?
Second. Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 33, the upgrade of approximately 8,200 feet of County Road 1043 from dirt to rock in precinct 1, monies and escrow.
Your Honor, I make a motion, we approve this upgrade?
Second. Got a motion, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Becky, that get them all except for 37 and 38?
And number one.
Number one.
Number one?
Yes.
We need to go to executive session on that one, too.
Okay.
That's, uh, the fire department contracts?
Yes.
My papers in order here. Yeah, okay. Uh, so, this time, I'll entertain a motion to go in executive session under action item 1, 1 and 4?
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll go into executive session at 11:15.
Okay, I got the camera headed back on. Okay, it's 12:32, we're back in regular session. We're going to take up action item number one, approval of Hunt County Fire Protection Agreement contracts. Commissioners, I'll make a motion that we deny the Quineland Fire Department contract until such time as they come forth and tell us how they're going to sustain themselves with the financing that they currently have, including what money they're asking us to give, how are they going to sustain themselves?
A second.
I've got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're going to go to action item 37. The final plan of Emma Acres. I'll make a motion that we deny the plat for Emma Acres due to it creating an illegal lot as a remainder tract.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 38, the final plat of Escobar Estates in Precinct Four, I make a motion we postpone this till the January 11th court meeting.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Becky, did we miss anything?
No, it looks like we had everything.
We got everything covered, guys?
Yeah, there's no comments online.
No comments online? Being no further business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned at 12:34.